First, 2016, between the district and California School Employees Association, Chap. 140. Acknowledgements?
Yes. I have a few exaltements that we'd like to make tonight, and I'd like to call following in vehicles to come up front to be recognized. Everado Marquez, I don't think he was able to join us tonight, Jennifer. Sounds like she is. There she is. Gabriel Ramitas. You guys are lost up there, I can't even recognize you when I look at you. Isabel Savantes. I'll tell you what we're recognizing everyone who's listening. Eva Huerta. And Eva Monica Macias. Okay, these administrators were nominated by their peers as administrators of the year for our association, our Association of California School Administrators, AKA AXA, Region 10. And so our state is divided into 11 regions, and they're represented by our associations. And so, these individuals were, Gabriel, Everado, and Jennifer were nominated as elementary principals for AXA Region 10. So let's hear it for the elementary principals. Isabel was nominated for our co-administrator award. And Monica Macias, with Eva, who called her by name, was nominated for our technology administrator award for AXA Region 10. And Ildehuerta was nominated for our central office administrator award. Some of these individuals actually received the winning spots for their categories, so you'll hear more. Well, Jennifer, how graceful you were on that one. So, these four individuals will be honored at the Spring Fling, I think it's April 29th at Chaminade in Santa Cruz, and they will be our Region 10. So this represents, I don't even know how many districts, but many districts, across Santa Cruz and Monterey County, in their category. So, we are so proud that we have four winners from Salina City Elementary School District to represent our administrators at the Spring Fling. Congratulations.
Mr. Kim, I just want to bring up to superintendent. We're gonna get to employee organizations first. Can we get from employee organization?
Between the board, Terrell Rodriguez, HSCC president. I wanted to talk a little bit about the survey about a survey which HSCC sent out about two weeks ago. Much of the survey had to do with items that are right now being negotiated, so I'm not gonna present those. But there was a set of, couple of other questions that I did want to bring up. It seems the district is considering whether to have groups of teachers write language arts curriculum, or whether to purchase published programs. There's only two state-adopted programs that are available in Spanish, so there's only two that the district is looking at because of that. Over half of the teachers who were sent to survey participated. Ninety percent said they would like to purchase a published program, and that's about 27% of the total teacher population in the district. Eighty-one percent said no to having teachers create language arts curriculum, and that's about 24% of total teachers. Of course, it's not everyone, not everyone participated, but I think it shows strongly that teachers would prefer to go with a published program. We have many comments, one of the comments was, we could purchase a published program and then add to that, sorry, add to that by creating units or whatever to kind of supplement or to bring things together for certain grade levels by side, or however that might be, but most wanted to purchase a published program. So, I wanted to bring that up to the board. To me, or to great?
Thank you. The other employee organization? Rosie Jo? Okay. Assistant teachers? Superintendent?
Yes, it's our last board meeting, I think I'll make this a little bit shorter than my last superintendent report, because I feel like sometimes I ramble on. But, we have, I attended the Tech University, which was on a Saturday. Really great, great event, where our teachers were presenting to their peers around different topics of technology learnings, and it was just a fun and energetic place to be. It was a great Saturday. I've spent probably four days, even though you may not see me as on the negotiation teams or spend a lot negotiating happening, so that takes up a considerable amount of time. And also, I've attended the AXA Superintendent Symposium, which was held in Monterey, and my highlight of that three days there was really around attending an executive leadership institute on cultural proficiency. And so, put on by Randall and Dolores Lindsay, they are top gurus in the country around cultural proficiency, and even though I thought I knew those subjects pretty well, I learned so much more, and would really like to bring some of the ideas and the templates that were shared there to our district, so you'll hear more about that in the future. On Monday, last Monday, we were able to have the founder, one of the founders, was Jessica Williams, here, and we went to visit the rollout at University Park, when our second were the teachers graciously opened up our classroom, and the kids were just totally embraced in the use of the program. And then I started getting videos from people and pictures from others, as, and we had a level release, a first day, first grade, grade level release was happening there for University Park, Mission Park, and so those teachers that were there, we dropped by the room, said, oh, well, if you were, if I was in my classroom today, you'd be seeing my classroom at Mission Park, and sure enough, Jennifer sent me some photos the next day of Mission Park. So it's really, really cool just to see what's going on out there, and how teachers are embracing the technology and the use of the program. Let me see. And then, I also started meeting this week, this week and last week, meeting with principals to have one-on-ones to review where they are in their mid-year goal accomplish comments, and they had set goals, one goal for English Language Arts and another goal for Math, Mathematics, and so, we're having face-to-face conferences around where they are in their, in achieving their goals. And Thursday, I let Francisco and Amy probably talk more to this, we did some site visits, but the highlight of that day too was boarding the bus at Monterey Park, going with kids to Farm Day, and so that was quite an experience, we had a great time there. And then, the last thing I wanted to say is, last Friday, we spent in the administrative team, and remember, those of you who have come to the board meetings, where we had our organizational charts and their goals up on these panels that are lining the windows, where we had our mid-year check-in for all the district administrators, to see where they were on their goals. And it was really, I thought, a very productive day, more than half a day, spent reviewing those in small groups, and just really, it's just a blessing to see how the leadership here is embracing accountability, and measuring up to some of the activities that I pose for them to do, and to be able to share those in open forum, not just keeping them to themselves. So, I really appreciated a great day with the administrative team.
Thank you. To my left, Mr. Hoffman.
Oh, I'll pass the mic.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes, I just want to bring up to your attention that this weekend, on Saturday, got a chance to meet some family, and this family was working at Cameron School, helping clean up the yard, the front of the yard, and so, we had a good conversation in there, and one of the staff members was there, and they were cleaning up, a child, a little one that was about eight years old, and the other one's about 11 years old, in that range, and they're there. But at the same time, Mom and Dad were saying, you know what, we'd like to do this, we wish more parents appear. It's that, that's over there at Cam, at Cameron. And also, I had an opportunity to meet with the site council at El Galilean, El Galilean Elementary School, and get a chance to talk to them, and we were going over, and matter of fact, they invited me, help them with the safety plan, safety plan. One issue came up, is that, do we have a uniformed safety plan in this district, or does everybody just do their own thing? I couldn't answer that, so, at the same time, we're gonna be working with that plan, and the appropriate administrators and parents, and trying to get back over there. They call me the liaison. They call me the liaison, they're, you're the liaison, you can go back to the district and tell them what to do, and we'll do it for you, over here. But that's not the point. The point, the next one is Cameron School, again. Got a chance to meet some parents, that were meeting with a well-known organization here in town, that works with children who are homeless, children who are disabled, and also their parents. And we got a chance to talk, and get to know them, and they were there at Cameron School, and they had their own presenter and their own facilitator there, which was pretty good. Cameron Lincoln, Tool Immersion, got a chance to visit Tool Immersion in its action, and that place, that cafeteria, multi-purpose room, whatever we want to call it, it was full of parents. And the issue, the question came up, what if we don't live in a district? And they explained it to them, and they stayed behind to find out what the process was. And that's all I have to say for right now. Mr. President, and I want to wish you a happy New Year.
Is this you on the floor?
I also got a chance to visit Tech U a couple of Saturdays ago, and I was very impressed, and wanted to commend Monica Macias and her group for putting on such an outstanding offering. I loved a lot about what was going on, mostly, I liked that it was differentiated, that teachers had a choice, depending on what their needs were. The second thing were the actual presenters themselves, many of them were teachers, and it was really nice to hear from their colleagues, what, how they could use these things. I just loved it, I think you're doing an awesome job in that arena, and to think that people gave up a Saturday to be there, that was wonderful. And as Martha had said, Francisco and I had an opportunity to visit four sites last Thursday, and it was just wonderful to see all the schools, and, you know, look at all the facilities, and observe firsthand their needs. But, the highlight of the day was definitely going to Farm Day. I hadn't ridden on a school bus in a long time, and I had forgotten just how much fun it was. And I think between the kids who were so excited to be there, and of course, those of you who have been to Farm Day know what an outstandingly organized event that is, when you're not in charge of children, or you're not responsible for a class, it is a very enjoyable event. You're not worried about who's taking off, and who's not in the right place, you can actually get to see all the great things that the kids get to see through their eyes, so it was a wonderful experience. Anyway, that's what I've been up to.
Wonderful, thank you. Mr. Stroud.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Like Amy, I went around to visit the school sites, I'm highly, highly impressed at the caliber of our personnel at every level, every unit, and I'm impressed at how tight our schools are, as far as the physical environment, it's like a welcoming, healthy environments that I witnessed. Also, I visited the LEAC meeting, impressed at how well they are run, very, some very good people, very caring people. And I visited Farm Day along with Amy, and our superintendent, and it's like, I've been visiting Farm Day for like the last 20 consecutive years. When I was elected to the Monterey County Board of Education, I thought, this is it, I'm retired, this is it, I'm not gonna visit Farm Day, which is one of my favorite places to visit. And, but no, I was, we were invited with Monterey County Board to the Farm Day event, and so it happens that, you know, I'm still being invited, and I am there. And one of the nice things, you know, to reiterate what Amy said, is that, when I was there as a teacher, I would tell my kids, make sure you stay with your group, I don't want you running anywhere, because they would see something get excited, and they'd run to wherever booth, whatever event was going on. And I would be the one running to those places, and I'd say, wait a minute, I gotta get a hold of myself. But that's how interesting I find it. I think education in this district is alive and well, and there's great prospects for continuing this outstanding situation.
Thank you very much. Okay, folks, welcome, thank you for joining us here on this sunseasomely warm day. Let's move on to public comment, any individuals designed to address the board? Matters not appearing on the agenda?
Good evening, can you hear me off? Good evening, Mr. President and members of the board, my name is Alva Ariano, and I am a teacher at Sherwood Elementary School. I just recently, just last, this month, I joined the PICT committee, and it was facilitated by Lori Sanders and Ron Dillinger, and thank you very much, because it was a very well-attended meeting, and it was very informational. We had two presentations, one was the units of study, the other one was the benchmark advance, and SRA was unable to present. I do have concerns about units of study, I don't think it's something that our teachers are interested in, and as you heard the survey, and also the survey at Sherwood, the majority also there did not want units of study. We haven't had a curriculum in 14 years, and out of those 14 years, you would say seven years ago is when we really needed some curriculum. With launching on the Eureka Math, it has been really tasking, we're all trying, all the teachers are trying hard. I just don't think that the units of study is something that we should go, we should even visit, entertain. I know that North Monterey County has implemented it, I have gone over to North Monterey County, I have talked to several teachers there, and also some administrators, and they, you know, they're not, they, they, some that I talked to, there was a lot of pros, and there was a lot of cons. And I just hope that you will all, as board members, please visit, come to our meetings also, and I'm talking, saying this only because I am a curriculum representative from the board for the Santa Rita School Board, I am the president of the Santa Rita School Board, and I go to the curriculum committee meetings, and I invite one of you to please come and listen to what the committee is presenting. Like I said, our facilitators are really good, the presenters are really good, but I was, we were, a lot of us, many of us, were not impressed with the units of study. And I understand that you want to pilot it first, and you don't have to pilot a curriculum in order to adopt. Remember, if we pilot, that's gonna be one more year we will be without a curriculum. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ariano.
Gabriela Perez, Mission Park, I just wanted to follow my previous speaker with the same topic. We also had a discussion with our staff about the units of study when our PICT representative reported out to us, and our question there was immediately, where are the materials coming from that are for the students? Because if we adopt a curriculum, it comes with student materials that, you know, the students can read, a phonics reader, and anthology, whatever the new program might entail. But if we develop our own unit of study, we had immediately the question, where are the student materials coming from? There might be a teacher's guide that is developed, but the student materials, where are they? And our representative reported that there was actually not that kind of time given to ask those people questions at the meeting, and it was just alluded to that, well, we can scour with what we have to make it happen. And given the fact that we haven't had a curriculum in 14 years, a new adoption in 14 years, I would also like to urge the board to go with a complete curriculum where we have all the materials, and we don't need to make them, and we literally need to scour the old ones, and try to find a matching story with something where we actually just have a curriculum ready to use. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President. Anyone else? Can we move on to the consent agenda? Have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move. There, someone is.
I'm sorry.
I think she's.
I had a question about assignment removal and transfers, number two.
All number two?
No, one particular thing, do you want me to ask the question now, or do you wanna?
Do you want to pull it? Which one do you want?
I had a question, so maybe it can be answered. Well, under administrator, we have Beth Vera getting the job title of Director Special Ed, and my only question was, that someone brought up to me, is that there's nothing removing her from her previous job title, and should that be in there? Maybe that's enough, it's just kind of my question. She had a, she was coordinator, and so, there's nothing that says she's being taken out of that position, so there was kind of a question of whether that should be.
That's a good question.
And one other, just kind of follow-up on that, we're kind of waiting to find out, especially being a spoken special ed myself, whether there is still going, is that coordinator position is still open, and I don't know if that's been decided, I don't, didn't see anything on there, I didn't see any decisions being made, so, but that was my question.
Could we pull that from the consent agenda to fix it, or do you?
Well, the assignment to that position is, is stamped, the removal is, the removal from the special ed position, that would have to be added.
Would the addition be just a correction, or does it have to be part of the consent agenda as well?
These positions posted the way they are on our agendas, very new to me, we've never, you know, any other district I've had, we normally do not have these even listed by names. On the actual sheet that is signed, the actual approval form, it is official around, you know, her replacement, it's a, it's a movement to a new assignment that didn't even exist, this position did not exist before, and other positions, it should be around the path, so.
Are we abolishing the district coordinator position?
So, there's talk about that, coordinator position existed to support the people personnel, so in that instance, it was relevant, now it's the director position, not so much. So, but, you know, so yes, at this point, the assignment to Director Special Ed would be not filling the coordinator.
We're not gonna have one, I mean, she'll do a similar job.
Okay, so do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the change that we're gonna add, removal of Beth Vera from the position of Special Education Coordinator?
Effective, two nine, 2016.
Two eight.
Today, and then she'll start tomorrow.
Two eight. Well, do I have a motion to that?
Well, I'm going to approve that with that change. Is that your motion?
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to adopt the consent agenda with the end language that we're removing Beth Vera from the position of Special Ed Coordinator, effective February 8, 2016. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all vote. Motion passes five zero. Then move on to information.
So, you, superintendent, and board members, and can you, I bring before you a revision to our school board policy on transitional kindergarten. This policy includes two very important updates to bring in compliance to recent legislation. One is on teacher credentialing. Our previous policy indicated that to teach in transitional kindergarten, the teacher needed the appropriate certification to teach regular kindergarten. Well, now that has changed, because under ED code, it's now requiring the teachers who are first assigned to a kindergarten class after July 1st, 2015, that would be anyone who began teaching transitional kindergarten for us this school year, must have by August 1st, 2020, at least 24 units in early childhood education and/or child development comparable experience in preschool setting, and/or child development teacher permit issued by the teacher, commission on teacher credentialing. So we've added that to update it. Also, this year, there was new legislation that allows districts to permit students who turn five at any point in time in a school year to enter transitional kindergarten. Currently, our policy says that students Currently, our policy says that students must be born no later than December 2. We're proposing that we extend that a bit at this point to December 31st. So that students born, and now this opens a window, from September 3 to December 31st or transitional kindergarten classroom. We would, we recommend this because we believe that transitional kindergarten is an important opportunity for our students. We'd like to extend it more. We hope to be able to build capacity with facilities and teacher credentialing to even extend it further in the future, but for now, that is an appropriate revision. Question?
You have a question?
Well, I just had a question. I see the wording here, but, so if a teacher is hired to teach in August of 2020, does that mean they already have to have those 24 units, the way this stands now?
Yes, it does.
And so if they're 1919, then they have a year to get 24 units?
Twenty nineteen, not nineteen nineteen. Yeah, if they were hiring...
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, twenty nineteen.
Right.
If they're hiring twenty nineteen, and they have one year to get those 24 units, that's the way they're writing it now?
That is the way it's being written. We, it does grandfather in teachers who, we do have teachers that in previous years taught transitional K, but are currently now actually in regular kindergarten classes. Because they taught before July 1, 2015, they are grandfathered in, they do not need to get those extra units, and so they're good to teach transitional kindergarten. If they choose to go back into that assignment.
Mr. Hoffman?
Well, I just have a question about if we have more facilities and enough teachers, we could extend the age to February, March, or the whole year, whatever.
Within the school year, exactly. I will point out that we do not receive ADA on the students until they have their fifth birthday. Now, we would be allowing this window of opportunity for students born from December 3 through December 31 to enter without receiving the ADA until their birthday. However, that can be incorporated into our local control accountability plan to be able to extend that learning opportunity to our students.
Well, that's our job, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
But I think also another implication is that you patch our preschool programs. We currently have a robust offering of preschool programs. What we tried to do was limit the fiscal impact to the district based on not collecting ADA till the child turns five. We did the math, and we looked at, as Lori said, from the 3rd to the 31st, looked at the numbers that currently had fallen. The kids, the number of students that fell within that window, and it was minimal. And so we thought this is a good thing, end of the year, makes sense. Going forward from there would have a much bigger fiscal impact on the district and could have a impact on our preschool programs as well.
Who's got CalPads?
Good evening, President Kim, Superintendent Martinez, board members. My name is Virginia Gakas, and I am the uniform special science for testing and student information systems. This evening, I'm going to present to you the California Logical Pupil Achievement System, which is otherwise known as CalPads, that's the acronym. And the actual report that I'm going to be going over today is the Powerline, which is the California Basic Educational Systems, which the acronym for that is Cbeds, which this year actually fell on October 7 of 2015. In addition to the Powerline, I also provided a list of acronyms that falls in my world. But what you will find out is that depending on the department that is actually presenting, some of our acronyms might be the same, but they have different meanings. So that might be the next step to the acronyms, okay? So Cbeds, if you don't mind, I'm just going to use the acronyms now, so I'm saying the long title, is a system for collecting and sharing demographic aggregated level data about students, schools, and our districts in the California public system. And for Salina City, it's actually TK through sixth grade. So our data is collected once a year on the first Wednesday in October designated as the informational day. So student data that is collected that day is our student enrollment, English learners, special education, ethnicity and race, reclassification, migrants, immigrant counts, English language acquisition status, which is known as BLAS, free and reduced, price meal, homeless, foster youth, socioeconomically disadvantaged students. And then this evening, I'm going to actually concentrate on more of our significant subgroups, which are also the posters that we also see here in the back. Those are the actual charts that I'm going to be going over and also sharing with you some historical data. Before I actually go on to the next slide, I also want to point out that the key elements of the new LCFF, which is the Local Controlled Funding Formula, and that acronym, I apologize, I didn't actually give to you, but so I'm giving it to you right now. It stands for Local Controlled Funding Formula. It is targeting specific disadvantaged student populations in the calculation of funding amounts. So LCFF includes supplemental concentration grants for targeted disadvantaged students, or like RELs, or free and reduced, price meal, and foster youth. So the first graph that I would like to share with you are ethnicity and race. So the graph is actually going to represent this year's Cbeds information. So as it's reflected here, our Hispanic population, our subgroup, is 90% of our students, and then you actually see all the race subgroups that are there. So just as a reminder, the way this is collected from the FEDS is that the students who are, who actually answer to, are you Hispanic or Latino, yes or no? If the answer is yes, then they actually fall into this subgroup of Hispanics. If they say no, and they answer, they respond by giving us one race, then it falls into that actual race. If they actually say no and respond to two races or more, then they will fall into a multiple, okay? And that's also in here. So the other thing that I have actually added are, like I said, historical data, because that's also important to know, like, have we gone up or have we gone down? So in comparison here, you can see that last year for 1415 on Cbeds date, we had 8,101 students that were actually Hispanic in our Latino subgroup, which actually was 87.77% of a population. The denominator is actually the total enrollment, okay? So you will see that every year. So for example, the top is the actual number of Hispanic or Latino students, and the bottom will actually be our total enrollment year, okay? So that goes back six years, okay? The next graph that I'd like to share with you is what they call the ELs, which is the English Language Acquisition Status Subgroups. And those are actually of our English learner, our English-only students, our RFEs, which are the students that have re-designated, our IFEs, which are initial fluent English proficient students, so those that take the self for the first time, actually come out proficient, are actually designated as IFEs. And then our TBDs, which are to be determined. And anytime we have a student that enrolls to us, depending on the grade, if it's, obviously if they're coming in as kinder, then we will test them if that's the first school that they've been with us. But if they come from other school districts, then we have to wait for that home language survey from the previous school. So that's the reason why they're TBDs, because we cannot change that. We have to wait and look at the first home language survey. But as you can see here, what I would like to point out and highlight is our English learner's population is 54% for this year. So if you kind of look at, if you look at last year, once again, I give you some historical data here, which is the total enrollment. This chart looks a little bit different because I had so many different subgroups that I wanted to share with y'all. So for 1415, you can see what is our number of ELs, our EOs, our IFEs, RFEs, and then our TBDs. So you can see here from just, last year, we had 54.03% of ELs, and last year, we had 54. So you probably will say, okay, well, it's gone down. Why is that so? So just by looking at the data, I can notice right away that last year, we had our RFEs were 735, and this year, they're 838. So that means we actually designated more students. So that's where you can kind of look at the data and see those, see those numbers there, okay? The next slide that I'm going to, that I'm sharing with you is our socioeconomically disadvantaged students subgroup. And just as a reminder that in order for students to fall into this subgroup, they are either free and reduced students and/or parent, one of the parents is not, or both are not high school graduate. That's what makes up our SED, our socioeconomically disadvantaged. To add on to that, for our free and reduced, our migrant and homeless students are actually what they call direct certified. That means that they automatically get free and reduced too, okay? But for last year, for this year, you can see that we have 80%, almost 81% of our students, if you round up, that are socioeconomically disadvantaged, and the number there is 7,344 students. Last year, you can see the number was at 83.55 and so forth, okay? Our next chart that I'm going to share with you is our Special Education subgroup. So last year, we had non-special ed was 8,389, and special ed is 716, which actually is about 7.86. You rounded up to about 8% of our students that are in the subgroup of Special Education. Last year, we had 685. Before that, 581. So you can see that our numbers are growing as the years go by. So last year, we were at 7.5%, seven and a half total. You have a question?
Is this include the counts, is it counted progress, or this is only...
These, for me, the students that are included in power school for us to receive ADA. So if they are in a program that we are receiving ADA for, then yes. But I do know that there's some, like, program in, at Lincoln, who is, that's actually county ran, and those students do not, yes, those do not count, so we do not receive them. Okay. Our homeless subgroup. So this year, we have 2,196 students that were homeless, which is about 24%. This is actually just, the homeless actually subgroup, last year was the first year that homeless and foster youth data was separated and included in Fall 1. So before that, they were kind of together, so to kind of be able to compare one to the other was very difficult to use. So this is one subgroup that next year, we will also have a third year of homeless. So just by looking at the both years, here we have, last year, we had 2,652. The other thing that I want to point out is that the actual, it says they're EOI, which means end of year. So the homeless report is actually taken at the end of year. CalPads does a snapshot of homeless at the beginning. So at the end of the year, we will actually have a report that we can actually compare with this 2,652. But it is part of actual the Cbeds. So that's the reason why I'm actually doing it right now, we're kind of giving a snapshot. So that's the end of my presentation. Are there any questions?
Is Cbeds an indicator of P2? From your past experience, do you, do the numbers increase, or do they go down, or are they pretty much the same?
They're not. They, it depends on the years, because once again, Cbeds is taken every first Wednesday in October. P2 actually happens in the spring, in April, so those numbers will not mirror each other against attendance.
Yeah, is the trend that it goes up, or is the trend that it goes down?
Well, the trend that is, it starts high in the fall, then it goes down after the Thanksgiving and January, and then by the end of January, it starts going up. I haven't actually, for P2, I think we have not been the same, and maybe Jerry can actually, for P2 numbers in comparison to the Cbeds dates, are they, happen to be marrying each other, or...
P2 is a little lower.
Yeah, okay.
And my question is, based on that, the number of the students that fall into the unduplicated count seems to be less this year than it was last year. How does that affect our budget? Because it's, you know, it, is it, does that mean we're going to get less money? Jerry, do you want to add a...
I dress on the budget part of it.
I'm sorry. I just, I just looked at it, and I, I thought it seemed, it's not significant, but it is quite a bit, and I was wondering...
We believe we'll see a little increase in the total unduplicated count from those numbers, which don't include everyone at this point. However, we do expect it to be slightly lower than last year. And for every percent less, that percent is 80 students. And 80 students equate, from the base number you get, you'll still get, but you won't get the supplemental, which is an extra 20%, or the concentration allocation, which is an extra 50%. So we lose about 70% of additional funds we would get for these numbers going down for each student.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Does this tell you how many of our kids live, you know, the poverty line? Does it have a percentage on that?
Yeah, no, the only thing that we get is actually those that are, well, free and reduced. We can separate actually free and reduced from education, which the number would be lower because with our socioeconomic, it's combining both of them. So we can only have that information based on the free and reduced numbers.
Just another point of information that came out, I think with the governor's budget in January, was that California at large is experiencing a 5% decline in student enrollment. And so when I look at, you know, what we've experienced over the last five years here in Salina City is an increase in students, and we're flattened, we're pretty much at a flat rate. I'm just glad we're not declining, you know, at that 5% rate. And so that's just something to keep in mind overall statewide. There is an indicator that for the next, you know, three to five years, there will be a slight decline in student enrollment.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan.
Mr. Ryan just got back from three days of the great family vacation. He's gracious enough to speed into town tonight on his bicycle to be here for us. Mr. President, Superintendent Martinez, trustees, and to give a more specific answer for maybe his previous question, I just quickly calculated that it's $360,000 for 1%. That puts it at $1. Having said that, the 10th of December 2012 was a great day in the history of our school district. That was the day we came to the board and asked the board to approve the loan that would move us forward with a comprehensive solar system across 13 schools. We didn't have Veranda Elementary open at that time. And take the lead countywide...